All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not ready. Craig Borba.
Here.
Juanita Garner, here. Al Jones.
Who?
Al.
My hearing's off, too.
He's here. David Norgard.
You're.
Deborah Short, present. Everyone is here.
Great. Since I'm offsite, I would like to turn the meeting over to Juanita as the vice chair to run the meeting tonight.
Thank you. Any acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
And, oh. We've got four in person and one online.
We have to roll, roll call. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Juanita. Yes. Al Jones.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz. Yeah. Our agenda has been accepted.
Okay, and we do have one public comment. If you'd like to step up, Mr. Anderson. Thank you. Do you want to read that? Yes. She's gonna read this. Yeah. Just a moment. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Library Board of Trustees on agenda items and items of general interest with the subject matter within jurisdiction of the city. Although the Library Board of Trustees values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the posted agenda. You have three minutes. Three minutes are assigned to each speaker. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name's Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Antwerp. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. And I'm really much with you. I'm just surprised and delighted that you, I guess, my last public comments, I made some suggestions or, and you, you're fired by those, and I, not a fight, but that's the wrong word, but I appreciate your eagerness to, to be as transparent and open as possible. And on that, I, this is sort of add. My, my main focus was really to be accepting of anybody that wanted to attend these meetings. And, and you're doing that. And, and my suggestion of having an agenda with the library was just that, just a suggestion. And I just thought would be, it's not best practices to do that, but that's your entity that you're, 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 you're working towards and working for. And I just thought the library would probably be interested and maybe attend these meetings if they, if they were notified at the library. Again, I have no idea if that would be a fact or not, probably unlikely, but anyway. And, and what else am I gonna say? I'm sorry. Oh, I think the agenda packets are great. I would, I probably, I would suggest that maybe just having one agenda packet that you can refresh for the public and then have the rest of agenda items for this agenda itself. Just for cost-saving measure, because just having it onsite and, and being able to see what you guys see would be really important to me. And, and that's something, I don't know if you can do anything about this, but just the three-minute speaking time, not that I'm gonna abuse that. Maybe some people would, reporting our senior meetings, but having three minutes for every topic on the agenda. It's really, I know it's a Palm Springs thing and only Palm Springs city type of issue, but I think the non-agenda public time, if you're required to by law, to have that, and then if I wanted to speak on agenda items, I maybe have, maybe have the public accessible to that when you consider those items, too. Like the airport permission, for example. Ex was ran made, so if you ever want to be, be load meetings, they, they allow public to speak, raise, raise itself. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brad. Okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda.
I did want to add that we added an item to the consent agenda. It's the Library Foundation Midyear Report, and I just wanted to make, make note of that.
Okay, great. So we need someone to, to.
You know what? I'll move, but I have some questions.
All right, go ahead, Craig.
I'm concerned on, on page eight. The Wellwood has had a lot of reduction in usage. Any explanation for that? It's, it shows up in December and shows up in January as compared to the year before. Where the main libraries has increased usage, Wellwood has had a drop-off, and in some areas quite a big drop-off. Is there explanation?
Um, hi Craig, this is Julie. Um, so it's about 200 people or so less. And I will say that last year we had some exhibits. Now, I think you're, you're gonna see, in the February numbers will be stronger because we had an exhibit at the Wellwood. And it was very popular. And so even just two weeks during the exhibit has exceeded what the whole month was before. So I think you'll see an uptick, but it, it sort of is dependent on what's going on at the Wellwood. And so we, we didn't have an exhibit in January, for instance, where we, you know, did previously.
Okay, thank you, Julie. And then if, you know, I keep looking at those percents. They're, they're bothering me a little bit, almost maybe we don't need them unless they're gonna be correct. But the adult programs in January was an increase of 233% and not 133%. So let's, let's just kind of check those numbers so that we can be more, a little bit more accurate.
Okay, we'll check our formula and make sure that it's running the proper fields, because sometimes when we add things, we, yeah, thank you for pointing it out. We'll look at it because, yeah, sometimes if we add a new category, our formulas don't necessarily work properly in human error. We'll, we'll get it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, do I? Do I have a second on that? Craig?
Okay, thank you. Was that Norgard?
My hand went up first.
We need a roll call for that.
Oh, yes, thank you. Craig Borba?
Yes.
Okay, Juanita Garner?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
Okay, everybody.
Thank you. And we're gonna move on to committee reports.
Administrative, so Friends. Friends are first.
Okay, sorry. Hi, I'm the Friends. I'm representing the Friends, I mean, I apologize. So they had their annual book sale last weekend. I was trying to see if they had any rough numbers yet. They do not. I'm sorry, I don't have any rough numbers to share with you, but I do know that it was very successful. Did you get some rough numbers?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, Jeannie will tell us the rough numbers. I had texted, but I did not get them. Okay, while she's looking. So it was a three-day sale. Friday was members only, and so they were able to sell some membership. Saturday was up into the public, and then Sunday was a bag and box day. So they all were very successful, and Jeannie will share.
Maybe $4,257.25.
There you go. So it was very successful. They do have their annual meeting coming up. It will be on Sunday, April 28th. And they will be sending out an invitation, so, but if you would like to add it to your calendar now, it will be held at the main library. And we will be talking about the library renovation, so we'll be excited to share there. And then, of course, the Friends, Palm Springs Speaks has the last of this season tomorrow evening with Billy Dee Williams, and that will conclude the season five of Palm Springs Speaks. And I think that's everything I have to share about the Friends. Does anyone have any questions? David?
Do you happen to have a, a time for the Friends family?
I believe it's 2:00.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Julie. Okay, and our next report is from Palm Springs, from the foundation, and I believe we have Peter on Zoom that's going to give that report. Is that correct?
Yeah. And I just want to say I'm excited to announce that we have hired an interim executive director, and it's Peter Pearson.
Have you raised $4,000 like the Friends?
Did you bring a copy of your will, if you?
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, so Peter Pearson, I was hired as the foundation's interim executive director on February 1st. And before I give you an update on the foundation, I just want to thank the trustees for the strong support that you have given and continue to give to this foundation. It's incredibly important, and it's so appreciated by all the board members of the foundation. So thank you so much for, for that strong vote of confidence in our future and what we can do. So to just give you a little bit of an update here, first, I'll just tell you my, my background very briefly. I served as the executive director of a library foundation for the St. Paul, Minnesota Public Library for 25 years. I was the first staff person there. We grew that foundation quite amazingly. By the time I retired in 2016, we had an endowment of about $18 million, and we're providing anywhere from $1.5 to $2 million annually in private support to the library. So I'm hoping that this foundation will follow in those footsteps and be a very successful one also, and I'm happy to help get it launched. So I see my role as the interim executive director in doing some organizational things. I'm helping to get the committees well organized so that we meet on a regular basis. We're working on the finances to get our finances in order, to be switched over from Quicken to QuickBooks. Just to, you know, all the background stuff, it's gonna make it a lot easier when the permanent executive director is hired, that he or she will be able to step in to an organization that is really running quite well. So to just, we've been doing a lot. And just to give you a brief synopsis of what's been going on, we're, of course, working on the public awareness campaign. And you're gonna see a lot of activity from that in March and April before people in Palm Springs leave for the summer. There was actually an interview today with Jeannie and David Sidley from the foundation, and you'll be seeing that, I'm sure, in the coming weeks and days. But that, that's gonna be a really wonderful help for the, for a fundraising campaign for the future. So we're thrilled that the foundation, that the trustees have helped support that effort for the foundation. We're also refreshing our website and redoing our logo, so you'll be able to see all of that happening very shortly. We have a special events committee that's been meeting and looking forward to another Pride on the Page for fall that we're working on, and then also probably another brunch program, which was successful the last time the foundation did that. So we're gonna continue to try to do some of the activities and special events on top of trying to launch some major fundraising efforts. We've been looking at the possibility of raising a million dollars through the foundation. There's been, you know, talk back and forth over the last year or so about what the foundation's fundraising will look like when the city council announced that it was gonna be funding the entire library renovation project. That kind of helped us to focus more on what we could do. And later on the agenda here, I'd like to talk with the trustees about our thoughts and plans for a million-dollar campaign that the foundation could launch here in the next few months. So all of that's happening. In addition, we'll be trying to look to hiring our permanent executive director sometime in the next three to six months, who would be a Palm Springs-based individual. You probably know that I'm working remotely on this job. I live in Florida. So clearly, we want to move forward having a part-time, halftime person who will be in Palm Springs. And then the last thing I'll say is it just, we're, we're really working closely with an accountant to try to get our accounting effort in line to pay bills more promptly, to do that online, to, to really have a state-of-the-art accounting process for the foundation, which will be more important than ever as we launch a campaign. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but if none, I'll end my report there.
Does anyone have any questions for Peter?
The report that's attached to our board agenda, is that gonna be discussed later, or is that supposed to be discussed now?
That was on the agenda, but you can also talk about it now if you want.
Okay. Go to page three on that report. It seems like the annual fund drive did exceptionally well. It brought in over $28,000, and the expense there was $1,300. What, that's a great return on that expenditure. I'm not, however, as excited about the Pride on the Page. It's, it's a good activity, but as a fundraiser, the gain ratio there is, is quite low. When you look at how much was spent and how much was earned. When I look at the Boys and Girls Club and their fundraisers that they have every year, they're raising over $300,000 on their events because there's no cost. Everything is donated. The facilities, the food, the drinks, all donated. So you have an expense of approximately $16,000, and you're making $4,000. That's gonna have to be addressed somehow. A great event, but if it's a, if it's a big moneymaker, it's not a big moneymaker.
So, so I'd love to answer that question for you. Unless you know that the Special Events Committee feels like you do, that they would like to see that become a more robust fundraising event. We're looking this year at having an individual for the big-name author who could potentially bring in higher ticket sales. And that's something that we're hoping for. I'll also tell you that the Special Events Committee is also thinking at some point in the future, probably in the next few years, of having a different event, not the Pride on the Page, but a different type of event with big-name authors that would potentially bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue. So it may be that the Pride on the Page is not gonna be the big moneymaker, but the committee would love to see, and is already starting to think about how we could do an event that would be a big fundraiser.
Right.
And I'll also jump in and say that the last couple of years for Pride on the Page, it's really been more about community outreach and, and developing the, the brand of Pride on the Page and the whole book series, and really trying to make it affordable and free. Almost everything is free, and Julie can chime in. She's been heavily involved in this.
Well, I was just gonna say that it wasn't, when it was conceived, it wasn't conceived as a fundraiser. It was conceived as a community event first, and then we were able to add in a speaker that we could charge a ticket fee for that allowed us to raise a few dollars, but we do want to, as Peter said, kind of relook at that, and we're making some changes for this year that it will raise more funds than we spend, and it'll allow us to get some different sponsors. So it's something that we're looking at, but we've only done it two years. And initially, like I said, it wasn't conceived as a money, as a fundraiser initially.
Is there any tie-in you could do with the Writers Conference that goes on every year that maybe get one of the authors to stay over? I don't know if that, the timing is wrong for that, but, you know, just a thought, since they're already here.
Yeah, yeah, and we could, we could see the, the one thing that the Friends of the library do, which is not with the foundation, but that the Friends do, the, the Palm Springs Speak Speaker Series, which is a, a complement, not a competitor, to all the speaker series in the valley. And so, yeah, we're trying to all do our own thing, but not step on each other's toes, and we want, we want to be complimentary in, in our speaker events. But yeah, there's so many things that, that we want to do. Yeah, so Peter's gonna lead us through.
Jeannie, was there anything done with the best bookstore in Palm Springs?
We do several things with them, and Julie works with them on, on quite a few events at the library itself, and we've, we've done something. We've had a couple, at least two, I know two events at the Wellwood, more than two, and, and we've done some events at the library. So they're a really good partner of ours.
And, and they were the, the book, sorry, and they were the book vendor at Pride on the Page this year.
Okay.
And they actually were a sponsor. They bought all the bags and supplied those as well for Pride on the Page.
Good. All right, thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions for Peter? No. Okay, we're gonna continue on with the library staff report. Okay, thank you. And I would like to introduce Arun Miani, my new administrative assistant. So welcome. He'll be here. And next month, I will not be at the April meeting, but Julie and Arun will be here running the meeting for you. So don't beat them up, too.
At all.
No. I did, it was brought up that there is a memo in your packet about agenda postings, and I did just want to mention that. We did check with the city clerk and the city attorney to make sure that we're in compliance with the Brown Act. And the Brown Act does require the agenda to be posted in a location that's freely accessible to members of the public and on the city's website. And so we do post it on the city's website, and we post it at City Hall, which is, according to the city clerk, the appropriate location, because you're supposed to post it where the meeting is held. So that's why we do it that way. And I do appreciate the comment about saving paper, and I had a printing error last month, which is why there are so many copies of that agenda over there. We have some really great things going on at the library that Julie said tomorrow is Billy Dee Williams for Palm Springs Speaks. Very exciting. There are tickets still available at palm springspeaks.org, and Manny, the movie guy, will be the moderator for that event. So it's gonna be just all-star event. We've actually got a celebrity coming in the audience, something like that. So a lot of fun. For outreach, the foundation and David Sidley and I filmed a site, like they said, filmed a segment today for NBC Palm Springs that will be running, probably already ran tonight, and maybe tomorrow. We've got, they're gonna do several different segments about the Library Foundation and their awareness campaign, and how libraries are important to our community and, and the renovation and the foundation, and all of the things. And David and I color-coordinated it. We did not, but we sure showed up in the same outfit, so we're ready for spring. And I wanted to let you know that the, speaking of outreach, we are going to be at the One PS Neighborhood Picnic. I think I mentioned this last month. We are going to have the Friends, the foundation, and the library, and the architects all together in one location at the picnic. It's Saturday, March 23rd, from 11:00 to 2:00. Everyone in Palm, all Palm Springs residents get free lunch. So come to the picnic. It's at Ruth Hardy Park, and there are so many fun things to do. There's a doggy costume contest. There's line dancing. There's games for the kids, and there's a hot air balloon, weather permitting. So you can, I rode in a hot air balloon at the Neighborhood Picnic one year. So I would say definitely come do that. And then we're gonna talk about the rest of our outreach plan, an agenda item. And Family Fun Fest, we are having at the Palm Springs Stadium, which is right next door to the library in Sunrise Park. That will be Wednesday, March 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Mix 100.5 will be there. We've got.
Vaccines.
Oh, vaccine.
Blinobio.
Happening. Oh, Julie can tell us more. And then we're, Stephen Willard Postcard exhibit has been extended due to popularity at the Wellwood, so you can see that March 14th, oh, no, that's a little, through the end of March. And then St. Teresa's School is going to have their annual architecture exhibit at the library, and that will be March 14th through April 15th. And if you have not seen those little models of the mid-century modern architecture, you've gotta come to the library and see them. They're adorable. And they're all over the library. And then Julie might, Julie has some other things that she would like to.
Yeah, so we have lots of great lectures and programs coming up. If you love Oscar films, you still have an opportunity to come to the library this Friday to see our version of Barbenheimer. We're gonna show Barbie and Oppenheimer both on Friday. And then Saturday, our librarian Scott will do a whole presentation about the Oscars, kind of go through the snubs and the his, you know, the history of the nominations and kind of talk to you about the front runners and all sorts of things. And that program's free at the library at 2:30. And then we have a great lecture with lifelong travel expert Adrian Berg on Tuesday evening at 6:00. And we have it at Meditation and Mindfulness, all about sound bath. If you've ever wondered what a sound bath is, come to the library at 3:00 and learn all about it on March 19th. And then we have another Sustainable and Wild lecture with Ozzy Landtrough, all about the insects of the desert on March 20th in the evening at 6:00 p.m. That's a Wednesday. And then we're doing our final lecture in the series with Palm Springs Modernism Committee, and that's on Tuesday, March 26th. They're gonna talk to you about everything that you were afraid to ask about modernism, before and after renovation mistakes and things to know. So that should be a great one, and that's on Tuesday evening, March 26th, also at 6:00. So we have lots of great things happening at the library, so please come and put it up.
And we have flyers. We have flyers in the back of the room for you to take, put them in your community, boards or neighbors or schools or wherever you might be.
And I did want to mention that we also have the In-N-Out reading program for kids going on that just started on March 2nd, and it goes through April 13th. So children can read up to five books, and they get a certificate for a free hamburger or cheeseburger from In-N-Out. So it's always a fun thing. So come and participate, register online and log your reading, and we'll give you a coupon.
Lots of fun stuff happening. That's it. Okay, great. That's the end of that report. Can adults get one of those?
My favorite.
Sorry, only kids.
No.
You need to have the kids read to you. Ages four through 12. And we've done this program for 20 years at least, I mean, since I've been a librarian here in the valley. We, it's a super popular program. They can earn up to three certificates each child. And I remember that kids would go into the library, and they would sit down with their family and read the picture books and record their books to get their certificates. And then the whole, the kid took the family to In-N-Out Burger to get, to get their free burgers. So it's super cute. And it's a great way to get kids reading. We love that. I remember buying a little pan of pizza when I was a kid. That's absolutely wonderful. Okay, we are moving on to the treasures report.
Yes, we, as you know, we had no meeting.
Microphone. There you go.
Here it is.
Okay. We had no meeting last month, so this goes back to. It is on page one, or page nine, as I never know how to do it. But anyway, it's the balance sheet for 2024. We did not have a meeting last month, so this represents the last, between January 3rd, which was our last board meeting, and today. And quite frankly, there's minimal movement on anything. I mean, it's hard to, to really see. We went from 1.798 million to 1.809. So we're talking about, about $9,000, so.
That would be your interest income. You've been.
And remind us, the interest income amount was how, what percentage? We expressed it before, but I thought we should do it yet again for Craig. He asked what, what is, what is the return?
What was it?
Six, I recall 6%, but that doesn't sound right. We had this down. Really, we did.
Do you all remember?
Well, rather than wait for time, we will yet find out a second time, and we will report on it at the next meeting. My apologies, Greg.
Thank you.
Before the end of this meeting.
We had it. I, I just, and I wrote it down somewhere.
Research.
That's in my report, so there's nothing more to say about it, other than to accept it.
Okay, do I have an acceptance for the treasures report?
I'll move.
I'll second. Second. Okay, it's 4.7%.
4.7% was the return in the city?
Okay. It's okay.
Okay, we're gonna move on to discussion and action items. We're going to accept two volunteers for the 2024-25 fiscal year budget at the subcommittee. So who, so historically, so every year I meet with two members of your board to go over the proposed budget for next year. We look at your, 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 your balance, and then we try We look at your, 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 your balance and then we try to decide what, how we're gonna allocate that. Yeah, and so you typically, the treasurer, because it's an ad hoc subcommittee, it can't be appointed. It has to be a voluntary, a volunteer situation. So you all can decide amongst yourselves who would like to volunteer.
I will volunteer.
Do you want to just do it again?
Yeah.
Okay, so then Al and I will volunteer. Anybody else? Does anyone else want to be a part of it? No?
We're in good hands with you two.
Tremendously good hands. We didn't accept it.
Do we need to?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's do it just to make sure. I thought we just did that.
We didn't do the roll call.
We didn't do the roll call.
Because Craig's the first one. Okay, Craig Borah.
Yes.
Okay, this is for the treasure report. So Craig Borah, Juanita Garner, Al Jones, David Norberg, David Schwartz. Yes, all accepted. And then we have volunteers, Al Jones and Juanita Garner for the subcommittee. And what I'm saying is that, yeah, it has to be voluntary. And, and it's not, just to be clear, a finance subcommittee is a standing committee that would be publicly noticed. And we would have minutes and an agenda and all of that stuff. But because this is specific to one item, which is the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget, it's an ad hoc subcommittee. So you two have volunteered and then now you can do the motion here. You must a motion and a second to accept. All right, so we need a motion to accept the two volunteers. Can I second? I guess. Great. And you will be notifying us when that is going to take place. And then you need to do a roll call. Who are in favor, so yes, and then I'll work with you two to set up a meeting. Craig Borah?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
David Norberg?
Yes.
David Schwartz?
Yes.
And it is approved and yes, I'll set up a meeting with you two. Great, okay, so we're gonna move on to the discussion of the library renovation updates and outreach plan. Okay. So, good news, the city council has approved the contact amendment for the architects. So they did that at their February twenty-ninth meeting. And we have signed agreements and notice to proceed. And we had our first meeting today at three thirty with the architects. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna hit the, hit the gas on this, this project. And we're working with them to, to move forward. So now they're going to start working with their engineers and landscape architects and all these people to do the design. And so we did more of the, the assessment, the engineering needs and the structural components and all of those, those issues. And, and so next is design development. And so we're gonna work on the floor plan and the furniture and the carpet and the color palette and those sorts of things and the landscaping look. And we're going to do outreach. And yes, we did hear from council that they wanted us to continue to do additional outreach and specific outreach with different groups. So we are going to do that. So we did, just so you, just to refresh, we did do our community outreach. And the way, and yes, we did just do one in-person session, but we did an online survey. We did paper surveys. We put the surveys at our three community centers. We put them at James O. Jesse, Desert Highland Unity Center, the Demuth Community Center and at the Leisure Center. So we put them in three areas of the city and at City Hall and at the library and at the Wellwood. And we, we engaged with over a thousand people. We actually did also have a pop-up, a pop-up session at Wellwood downtown. So the architects did take their, their road, their show on the road and they went to Wellwood the same day as that open house. So like I said, we got over a thousand people participating. But we did hear that, that we would, the city would like for us to do more targeted outreach, which we are going to do. So the plan is that we are going to be at the neighborhood picnic. And so that is Saturday, March twenty-third. Do you need another copy?
Yes. Sorry.
It's mind catching.
We are human. So we're gonna do the neighborhood picnic. And that's from eleven to two, so that's on a Saturday. So we think that's a really great place to hit families, neighbors. It's a huge event. I don't know how many, hundreds of people. A lot.
A lot. Thousands.
Thousand plus. And we are talking to the architects about doing a, an open house. We haven't quite determined the location yet. We're trying, we're debating. So we're thinking that we're going to do an open house, an open house and presentation, which will be Wednesday, March twenty-seventh. So the open house format would be five to six, or five thirty to six thirty. And then from six thirty to seven thirty, do a more formal presentation. We're debating on whether to have that at the library because it's about the library or to do it at the Demuth Community Center, which would be in more of a neighborhood setting. Or, yeah, or maybe both. And also we're, we're talking to James O. Jesse also about doing one there. So we're doing that. I have directly met with my partners, the Boys and Girls Club. And Margaret's very on board for me to bring the, the, the survey and the boards and the community engagement program to her children at her after-school program. And then also the Mizel Senior Center to set it up during a lunch service. So that we hit the seniors and they're there eating their lunch. And they have a lot of people that come for lunch. So those are the, the main points. Oh, and grassroots, our grassroots plan is that we see all these programs at the library before and after every program. We could have our boards out and have community engagement. And as people come in for the program or as they leave or both, either one, we could say, hey, did you, did you get a community engagement yet? And then they put their docs on, on their preferences. And then we count all that information and we load it up into the statistics and find out what the community wants. So that's the big plan. We're also planning to expand our steering committee because we, we do have members of the trustees. We do, we do need to talk about the steering committee, who's gonna serve on the steering committee. Or if you want to, you know, whatever, we'll figure that out. Who wants to be on the steering committee for the trustees, the foundation, the friends? And then we'll have community members on that as well. So that's the longest short story ever.
So could I interrupt, James? I mean, first of all, I wanted to congratulate the foundation. Because they met immediately before the city council meeting. And how many of the foundation members made presentations?
Do you know a lot, over thirteen?
I, I was number one, that's all I remember. But it was, it was really well received.
Well, we have probably twenty people total.
Yeah, it was good. But I mean, just for the record, the city council led by both Jeffrey Bernstein and Grace Garner were very critical in terms of the lack of consultation they presumed that we had done. And they were very clear that while they would go ahead and, and you know, support the funds, it was conditional upon doing the additional outreach, which Jeannie has already outlined specifically with the Boys and Girls Club and also with the Mizel Center. They were concerned that the one public hearing was, or public whatever was at three in the afternoon when people were at work. They were very, very, they were very supportive. I don't want to misunderstand, they were very supportive. But they made it very clear that we had to be a little bit more expansive in terms of our consultation. And that is a major thing with this city council and ones before it, but especially this one, more so than any other I've seen. So we just need to be cognizant of that as we move forward with anything that's going to, what we go forward to the city council. But I think Jeannie's done a good follow-up, that's why I appreciate the response. She's responded directly to what they requested and gone beyond. So we have to show that we've gone beyond. So I just wanted to say that and the foundation took the lead, the foundation meeting elected them because you are the two. And I'm only there as the liaison, but everybody spoke elegantly and did not repeat each other, which was really fascinating. They each had their own story about the importance of the library. And it was a personal story and it really made us, made, made a home run, I think, for the group. Again, I'm not good with metaphors, so figure out what home run means.
Oh, I did want to add too, I forgot about this step too. The architects want, are planning to do two city council updates. One in, I believe, one in April and one in June, so that they don't feel like this is the first that they've heard of it.
Well, we need to be aware of those dates so that we can be there again.
Definitely. When I get them firm, firm, we'll let you know.
Yeah, that's great.
It's, that's part of the plan too, because we didn't do that the last time. We just kind of showed up for the, please approve this and, and they didn't feel like they had even seen it before. So we want to make sure that they're included and can, can weigh in as a, as a representative, but also as a citizen or resident of the community too. Great, that's wonderful. It sounds like a lot of really awesome stuff here. I need to do it. Jeannie, we don't need a motion for this, right, for what you're doing for the outreach? No, okay, so David, go ahead.
Oh, thanks. I, I know you touched on, but if you wouldn't mind going back to the matter of landscaping parks and rec, of some of the larger plan for Sunrise, Sunrise Park? Could you expand on that a little bit?
Yes.
Now that we're moving forward with the whole.
Yes, and in fact, the, the Parks Master Plan Project has done a kickoff also. And they're doing community input as well. And they will be at the neighborhood picnic and they're gonna be at all these different things too. So our architects have requested to actually meet with the consultants for the Parks Master Plan so that they can coordinate with each other and make sure that, that we're being complimentary and not competing again on that project. So they're already requesting a meeting with, to talk about the same thing. So yes, we're, we're definitely going to try to integrate into the Parks Master Plan. But we are also just one little corner of that whole park. And we're, we're really looking forward to our landscape architect's design that will be sustainable and also more, well, sustainable, number one, it's water conscious. But, you know, maybe improve the site too and make it, beautify it as well. And I just wanted to say that during the Black History Parade, the, the master plan people were there and they are local. They're from the valley. They grew up here in the valley. They know a lot about native plants. And so I got to talk to them for a little bit and they are amazing. They have lots of wonderful, wonderful knowledge about Palm Springs. And, and so anyway, it was a great, great thing. And they had a wonderful display set up. And, and people could come up and ask questions and put little, they were doing little post-it notes. Anyway, they're doing a fantastic job. Yeah, and I am actually serving on the steering committee for the city. So I'm one of the city's representatives for the Parks Master Plan. So I'm heavily involved with that. But our, and our architect is Rios, landscape architect. They're the ones that did the downtown park. So you will be familiar with their work if you've ever been to the downtown park.
Thanks, Jen.
Okay, thank you. So now we're going to move on and the Library Foundation's request to allocate one million dollars previously set aside for the library renovation to be designated as a matching funds for the foundation's fundraising capital campaign. So who's going to speak on that?
Peter.
Peter, let me start real, real quickly to tell you that in your library budget, you, last year, you did authorize a million dollars as a set aside for the library renovation project. So that was something that you did last year and the money has already been designated for the renovation. But we have an idea.
We have a, we have a cancer.
Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you. So when the city council indicated its support for the full budget of the library renovation, that opened up some interesting possibilities for fundraising. Our Development Committee of the Foundation has met with Jeannie and Julie twice to talk about how the foundation could be helpful, given that the full renovation is being covered by public funds. And Jeannie's been good about telling us that there are certain areas of the library that she would love to see enhanced, probably beyond what the public dollars will do. And those areas would include the children's area, the meeting room and also the teen maker space. So with that in mind, the Foundation Development Committee indicated that they would like to launch a one million dollar campaign to match the million that the trustees have designated for this project. And together, we could offer that two million dollar package as a means for enhancing those spaces that Jeannie could work with the architects on. We don't know yet what the budgets might look like or what those exact enhancements might be. But I think it at least gave us some direction for what a fundraising campaign could look like from the foundation. The other thing that those of you that have done fundraising know is matching funds in a fundraising campaign can be incredibly motivating to donors. And so with the trustees' interest in allocating a million dollars for this effort, we would love to launch a million dollar campaign that we could put to the community and say, every dollar donated up to a million dollars will be matched by the trustees for a total of two million dollars. Obviously, before we would launch such a campaign, we'd have to have all of the information from Jeannie and the architects about which of those three spaces we could afford to do and the types of enhancements that we could do. I know in my most recent conversations with Jeannie, she had indicated that the children's area and the meeting room would certainly be the top two of those three. So maybe it's possible to do some exciting enhancements for all three spaces with two million dollars. Or maybe it would only be possible to do one or two. But we'd like to propose such a joint effort between the foundation and the trustees to do this type of a two million dollar campaign where we could offer the trustees a million dollars as matching funds for the million that we would then raise.
That sounds amazing. I think that's wonderful. Does anyone else have any questions for, or any comments?
Oh yeah, I have a couple of questions. Jeannie, what's the discrepancy between the projected cost by the architects and what the city and the state's giving us?
At this point, there's no discrepancy. The city, the city has, they were aware of the project budget and they approved the scope of work related to that project budget. So at this point, there, there's no shortfall. But we just are predicting that when you design a, a public building, that they might not want to, to do it as, as excitingly and enhanced. Like you can imagine a children's room that would be completely decked out as almost like the, the children's Discovery Museum or.
This doesn't include the, this does not include the second building, correct?
No, this, no, not the, not the, you mean the event center?
Yeah.
Or the building, neither one. This would be for enhancements in the main library. I'm envisioning the children's room that would be fantastic and that people would love to go there year round. It's climate controlled, but also have the outdoor patio and develop that as a family space and just a really fun place to be, not necessarily a playground, but some indoor educational interactives that kids could go, you know, play with or, or do. And then in the community room, you know, we could get a basic, we, we can, we could probably expect a basic setup. But wouldn't it be great to have something that we could really be proud of? I mean, we would want to be proud of this place, don't get me wrong, but.
But have a TV on the wall and.
Yeah, right now, yeah, right now we have a TV that probably came from Costco. You know, like here, we're, we're hooked up to the laptop, but you know, we, we need some first-rate technology to, to be a place that groups want to come to and use. The film festival, wouldn't it be great to have a space that they could come to or that we could do our author events or our pride on the page? Or that we could do our author events or our pride-on-the-page festivals or develop our own special events that would be within our building. So there's a lot. Um, we're, we're, we're working with architects. Again, we just got the, the notice to proceed, so we're gonna, we're gonna work on that to develop what this could look like. But first, we wanted to check with you all to see if this was a path you wanted to take. Because it's gonna be um your moment too, as the trustees, to to say if this is what, how you wanna use your funds and if you wanna do it as a, a fundraising campaign to help make this place even better.
Is the foundation um gonna have any skin in this game? Where the trustees are putting in a million, what's the foundation putting in? Cause you have a budget right now of a hundred and ninety thousand, if I remember correctly.
Right, but we would launch a campaign to raise an additional million dollars over and above the trustees' million. That's our goal.
And then what after that?
After that, we would look to raise monies annually for whatever types of projects the library bills are important.
Uh, uh, Genie, are the bookshelves and the furniture already covered by the city or is that gonna have to be generated from us?
Not that covered in the budget. For now. Yeah, they're covered. They're included. Everything was included.
Alrighty, if there are no further comments or questions, now do we, we do need to um.
Yeah, you do need to decide, is it what you wanna do?
Uh, I need a motion uh to go ahead and give the, uh, not give, but um we've already given the million dollars, but to use it as matching funds, is that right?
I have one more question, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Does this million dollars stay in our budget but allocated for the library? Or does this million dollars, does this million dollars go to the foundation?
I don't think so. I think it would stay in your account until it's needed.
Peter?
There would be no reason that the million dollars from the trustees would ever have to flow through the foundation.
Great. Alright, thank you.
Okay, great. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Dave.
I I I just wanna try to clear my mind how this is, this would work. Um, so the foundation conducts a fundraising campaign for a million dollars. Part of that campaign, if if I'm understanding correctly, is the um the announcement that this board, that the trustees, will uh match funds raised by the foundation up to a million dollars. And then, let let's say the fundraising campaign by the foundation is entirely successful, raises a full million dollars. Um, and so that would be two million, one from the foundation, so really? And one from trustees that would go towards the projects that were just described a few minutes ago. Is that? Am I understanding this correctly?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well.
And if the foundation raises seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're still good for our million. Right?
Yes.
Cause we've allocated that million to go to the.
Regardless.
Yeah.
This is an add-on when you decide now we're gonna do. I'm sorry. I mean, this, I consider this kind of an add-on. When you decide at this point to make it a challenge grant or not even a challenge, but a matching grant, it's not uncommon to do that, but that doesn't mean if they come in short, that that reduces what we've made the contribution. Ours is there.
So I, what I'm understanding is this is just a way to get the community excited and to get people to give money, to help raise. It doesn't change the fact that we've said we want a million dollars to go to the library for whatever the library needs to have done. So that's, that's a done deal. But I understand that when you say we're matching the funds, people want to give, cause they want that.
That's right.
Enticement.
Okay, yeah.
I just wanna be sure that when you talk about the trustees are going to provide a million dollars, that you're not talking about us individually.
I know what you were trying.
Al, you're good for it.
You'd welcome either approach.
Your trust fund will give.
Yes, the trust fund.
What, one more question if I may. Um, so when we did the allocation originally, my understand, or recollection of that was that it was for the purposes of uh the foundation's use in um fundraising for this this major effort we're undertaking. Is that correct?
No, that's actually uh half a million set aside for them. So they definitely made a hundred thousand dollars for them.
I see.
And a million for the renovation.
Oh, so the money for the renovation, that's the, that's the money we're talking about. Which I thought was another mill, okay.
It can be.
Alright, now I'm clear. Thank you. I, we, we were talking about two separate things.
Yeah, yes.
Right.
Alright.
Absolutely. Okay, so now I need a motion, um so that the um so that they, the Library Foundation can go ahead and use that million dollars as an incentive uh for a match, for matching funds for the fundraising efforts.
I think it's great and so moved.
Second.
Thank you.
And I need to do roll call. So roll call, uh Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
David Norberg?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And past you now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is gonna be great.
Raise it yet.
That's where you ask if any of the committees um have any reports. The committees will sit down here.
Oh, oh, oh.
You just, okay, just generally call out.
Alright, so any uh committee reports from our other, from our standing committees?
No.
No, no reports, okay.
I I I do actually have a question from the building committee.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, do we have a date certain yet from the architects as to the next meeting of that larger working group? Um, I think that was called the steering committee, but maybe I'm off on that point too.
I believe it's in pencil. It, I think it's April twenty-fourth at five thirty.
It, it, April twenty-fourth at five thirty.
And also May twenty-ninth at five thirty. Those are the two that I had written down.
Okay, April twenty-fourth and May twenty-ninth, five thirty, both. The steering committee.
And then currently Craig is on the building committee and if you want to, you can uh if you are not able to go, you can always appoint or, you know, discuss amongst yourselves and have a sub.
Yeah, let me see how the schedule here is working out.
Thanks.
Okay, alrighty, so we're gonna have to move on. Do we have any staff comments, trustee comments or any future agenda items? No? Okay, I'm going to, the meeting of the Library Board of Trustees will adjourn. It's next meeting is scheduled for five thirty P M on Wednesday, April third, twenty twenty-four. And get your solar reflectors glasses.
Craig, where are you?
So you're adjourned six twenty-nine in.